Over the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from last, um, last year's school division budget into this fiscal year to address, uh, school division needs. And they all encouraged me to bring to the town or to the council a plan on how we would use those funds within the school division. So tonight, my goal would be to demonstrate to you all, uh, a plan to use those funds, uh, for student needs. And I wanna, I wanna say that clearly that, um, the, the premise of the allocation that was given to the school, whether it be by the state fund or be by, uh, the locality funding the school division, is to go to student need. And so for my purpose of speaking to you tonight would be to demonstrate the need, uh, whether it be through infrastructure, whether it be through, uh, instructional support and resources, um, or, um, for things for student athletes, um, there's a need within the school division. And so I would hope that this document demonstrates the needs for students, staff, and why access to these funds is paramount for the school division. I have provided each, provided each council member with a copy that provides a brief description, justification, reason for request, possible impact, possible effect, and projected cost of each proposed initiative. Um, and so with that, I would like to, I guess, give you a brief summary of each initiative that's mentioned within this document. Do you mind? Okay. The first thing I wanted to bring to your attention would be item number one, which would be the adoption of the Admin's Financial Software Program. Um, the town has already adopted this particular program. And, um, unfortunately, the school division came in on the latter, latter part of their discussion. And we would like to move forward with adopting the same financial program that the town currently has. Um, but that comes at a cost. That cost, uh, when speaking with the company, is about sixty thousand dollars, okay? Um, and they did work with us on that particular number to bring it down so we could potentially discuss adding it to our budget or through the process of using those unspent dollars to adopt this particular program. It would help with our financial ability as far as the redundancy and work that currently takes place between our finance office and the town's finance office. Uh, so there's a great benefit there with moving toward that, this, the Admin's Financial Program. And that would be one area where we would like to spend those funds.
Can I ask a question about this particular topic?
Oh, it's fine, it's fine.
That, um, the, this is a one-time fee then in order to switch out of this program? This isn't the annual cost?
No, the annual cost is about ten thousand dollars each year.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, this would have potential to save the town money in time or resources?
I believe time and resources is a, it's a better way to put it. Um, right now, certain aspects of our, um, organization or the personnel within our department frequently put, we put in, um, the finances in several locations and then we have to come over to the town to perform work. It's my expectation, this may say that's roughly maybe twenty hours of, of man-hours each week, uh, but, well, not each week, but each month, uh, for our finance team by making this transition.
Everything?
Yes, ma'am. Any other question on that particular topic? Okay. Um, and you can also, I, I'm not reading everything verbatim, um, from this, but if you take the opportunity to thumb through this document, you can clearly, um, delineate the needs that we have for our, on school division. The next topic would be, um, facility and athletic improvement. And with this, we're talking about upgrading the bleachers, improving the fence line along the softball field, and address other team equipment needs. Uh, one of the things that you'll notice when you attend, we've talked about our basketball team here tonight, they, they've done an outstanding job, but in going to those, to the basketball games and observing the, the, the fans that actually attend of all ages, uh, sometimes they struggle when that, to, to access the bleachers inside of the gym. And, um, addressing the bleachers allows, allows the school division to improve the safety, uh, bring it up to code, put safety rails within the bleachers for some of our elderly, um, uh, patrons who attend to the games. I mean, it makes you more comfortable for those who, who actually attend the games as well. Uh, but when you go to the gymnasium and you go to the, the football field, you can clearly tell that, um, there's a, a, a need for us to address, uh, the bleachers in both aspects. And so this, this particular quote addresses that, and then also too, um, addressing the fence line. And speaking with the baseball coach, uh, the fence line is beginning to wear, um, in the, around the athletic complex, uh, for obvious reasons, it's getting old. And so we would like to take these funds also to address that as well. Moving on to school bus replacement, uh, we've talked about it before, uh, our fleet of vehicles continues to get old. Um, and so we would like to, to use funds to address the purchase of one school bus. Uh, right now, at this particular time, we would like to replace bus six. Um, the state expects school divisions and localities to work together to address roughly ten percent of their fleet each year. Uh, this would be one bus for the school division this year and it would help us tremendously. Uh, there's more information there under the project justification and description, uh, for your reading pleasure, if you consider that to be reading pleasure. The second, another request that we have would be the replacement of the heating units located above the gym. Uh, question, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I see the cost on the bus. I mean, I've seen it before and I'm actually, I'm sorry, I didn't see the cost.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe I left the sheet off and I, I couldn't, I couldn't. I couldn't lift it off.
Oh, okay. I'm looking within the line item.
Okay.
And on the athletic field and equipment, um, one of the things that's been requested time after time after time has been lighting for the softball field so that those fields can be used because like it says in this document, that you have four teams practicing on two fields and scheduling is difficult. And if, of course, we could still do practices meetings at night, scheduling would be easier. That's not included in this.
Um, not at this time, however, it's something that we could explore. Um, we're looking at the, over the last five years, not to say that we do not need the lights, I mean, if, if it were possible, we would love to have them. Uh, but looking at the overall need of, of athletics, we, in discussion with several school board members, decided to, to, to focus on the things that I have in front of me.
Okay, so the lights are just the lower priority?
At, at this particular point, I would believe so. Yes, ma'am.
You got my mind, alright.
Say again?
I said that's all, Scott, I'm on.
Yes, ma'am. Another question?
That's it, right?
Okay, alright, um, high school HVAC replacement. Um, the, the units that are sitting above the gymnasium are in need of, uh, replacement. They have met their life expectancy. When talking to our energy provider and the contracting company that we worked with, to repair our HVAC units, they have encouraged us on several occasions to begin looking into those HVAC units and replacing them. Uh, the goal would be to replace them sooner than later because we would not want to wait to, until they fail, because they could fail at the end, at the, at a time in the school year, uh, where we wouldn't have heating and cooling in that, in those, in that area. And so we behoove us to, to begin making preparations to replace those units. Uh, and that is a quote that the, uh, a, a known contractor, uh, provided us. Any questions on that one? Yes, sir. Okay. Moving right along. Uh, vehicle replacement. Board supervisor just spoke to you all about, um, the requirement for the school division at times to transport students to alternate sites and locations. Um, I've provided you with a brief description of the vehicle fleet as it stands, um, and, and we are in desperate need of vehicles to meet the expectation that the state has placed upon us. Uh, we take students now anywhere from Richmond to Montrose to Fredericksburg on a daily basis. And it's a, it's a requirement, and it's one that we do not have any, uh, we cannot fault at the expectation, it's one that we have to meet. Uh, but unfortunately, we are sending our fleet out on the road, um, and they are, the, the cars are deteriorating, deteriorating at a high rate. And as you can see, we have vehicles with high mileage. And we've put a lot of money into trying to keep the fleet up and running, um, but it's, it's not cost effective at this point to continue to dump, uh, ten and twelve thousand dollars into cars that are not performing well and running well. Okay. Any questions on that one? The wall covering for the elementary school. Um, simply put, when the school was built, I don't believe we anticipated students rubbing their book bags and hands across and down the walls of the, of the building. Subsequently, they are leaving nasty marks, not on purpose, nothing, nothing intentional, but they're marking up the walls, as kids do, my own kids do it, do it in my house. You know, so I, 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 I understand what they're doing, why they do what they do, but, you know, I don't like it, but my kids do it. Uh, but our students are doing that as well, and we need to think about, um, finding a replacement or another way to address that. Uh, last summer, we spent about three thousand dollars, um, with a local person to, to repaint the walls. Uh, but I don't believe it would be a smart thing for us to continue to do that each and every year. So looking for this, these funds to hopefully put a, a type of covering that stands about maybe three and a half feet high from the floor to prevent students, younger students, from rubbing their hands and book bags across the wall. Any questions on that? Uh, the high school LED retrofit lighting project is one that I would like to pursue as well. Um, and, and simply put, any day you would like to, I'd be happy to take you up to the elementary school, walk you down the hallway, in the classroom, in the cafeteria, in the gymnasium, and then transition into the high school. It is extremely dark in the high school. Um, and I'm sure the students who transition from the elementary school, once they leave a well-designed and, and put-together building, will wonder what in the world? You know, the high school needs some, some attention, it does. And I believe that building has great bones and a great structure. Uh, but I believe that we do need to focus some attention to the high school to make sure that those students have a comparable learning environment, simply put. And so this would be one project of a, of, of many projects that I feel we could potentially use some of the end-of-year funds to address as a school division, if allowed to do so. Any question about that particular project? Uh, and then, this may be the last one, the instructional resource need. Uh, the school division, uh, in working with the state, the state is adopting new content expectations for, uh, several content areas, which requires the school division to adopt textbooks. And a textbook adoption and resource purchase could run anywhere between twelve thousand dollars and fifteen thousand dollars a content area because textbooks run extremely high. Uh, the school division would like to pursue adopting the needed textbooks for the areas of, um, to complete the purchase for the areas of math, but then continue to adopt textbooks for, um, uh, reading, science, and history, and language arts. So that would be a, something that's imperative for the school division to keep up with the expectation that state places upon us, but then also too, to make sure that our student, our students have the needed resources to learn from, and that our teachers have the needed resources to teach from. Any, any question about, about that?
Just one thing, Mr. Turner.
Yes, ma'am.
You might want to let everyone know that the standards of learning that the teachers have to teach.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Go through cycles of renewal.
They did go through, yes, ma'am, they do.
And I'm not sure who's up when and, and, you know, who's up first and what's in second, but, um, when, when is now?
The math, the math standards of learning were just updated.
Yes.
In seventeen or eighteen?
Math was just updated in history.
They start this, uh, spring?
Yes, they do, yes, they did. They did start this, this spring.
Okay, so that would be those two?
Those two, um, and then there's conversation about the new history standards. But the state has, they're in the process of determining whether they need to design a new history SOL test, but then there's the argument of, do we even want to test history anymore? But that does not remove the expectation for the school division to teach from previous standards and the newly adopted standards that may come out. So the expectation for us is to consider that, but then plan appropriately to address their, you know, their new adoption, content adoption, curriculum adoption. So, um, that's the reason why I bring this to your attention, because it does cost a lot of money. And once again, when the money was appropriated to the school division, whether you talk about the, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from last year, or you're talking about the three hundred thousand dollars that was, uh, developed over, over previous years, the intent behind the fund was to educate kids. And so I'm simply painting the picture of the need for the school division with the hopes that you all would entertain that. And I believe that is all that I have. I know that I talk fast, um, so I'm gonna step to the side and now, uh, Mr. Trigg to speak to the council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, town council. Just briefly, I just wanted to reinforce what?
Can, can, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think there's a couple people with questions for.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, go ahead. Yes, sir.
I had one, yeah, but, um, I didn't have a chance to read this.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You mentioned three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Is this the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the state gave you and was, at the end of year, it's not spent, has to return to the state? Or is this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town gave you for, and that you took back last year because it wasn't, it wasn't spent?
Um, I know that the budget document is going to look as if, uh, this money came solely from the town, um, but the school division was still receiving state funding up until the, um, end of last fiscal year, a matter of fact, up until August. Um, so some would, would argue whether, whether the funds came from the state or came from the locality. I believe that the funds came due to the increased ADM dollar that the school division had, which would, which would be considered state revenue. The, the, the budget was built last year on the number five eighty-five, uh, but we ended our March ADM of that particular year with about six hundred and thirty kids, which means we will receive increased state revenue. So I believe those funds are, um, more state revenue than they are local dollar, but within the budget document, I mean, the audit document, it's gonna paint the picture that it all came from the locality.
So there are need to?
Um, so, so, we, we had the same level funding, the same level of funding, state and urban for trade and secondary. So it wasn't until this past fiscal year that the three hundred and fifty thousand was unspent. The other two fiscal?
Yes, sir, that, that would be correct, um.
Was that, how was that spent and that it wasn't spent this year? And I know this occurred with women and we're just, just getting in, and this is not something you have to answer to that, I'd be more happy to sit and talk to you about it because I won't put you on the spot, but I just, I haven't had a chance to make this as well.
Mr. Mayor, one simple answer to that is we can't spend what we don't have. That's the law. And the, that's why the state notified us that we wouldn't be getting those funds till late. So even if we had things that we were gonna use those funds for, whether it be buying textbooks, changing lights, or any of those things, we can't go over our budget. It's against the law, and we have to come back to you and ask you for additional funds at the state and to.
And to, to, to piggyback off of what Mr. Trigg just said, the, the goal for this year, because I, I do anticipate that the school division will have, um, more students than what it actually budgeted for last year, which would then cause increased state revenue. So my responsibility is to work with the, the school board to, to re-adopt the eighteen, nineteen budget with those increased revenue, get their approval for the way we would like to spend the increased state revenue, not new local dollar, increased state revenue, have them approve it, come to you all at some point between the end of April and the first of May, so that you know what we need, that we need to re-adopt the budget for eighteen, nineteen, um, have your approval, and then we can, uh, place the money where we feel like it needs to go. Uh, so that's a process that, that takes place in, um, in most cases.
Do we have very much of that information today?
I'm not looking for, I don't believe we are looking for a, an answer specifically tonight, um, but I would like to have, continue the discussion first and foremost, um, with you all on how, uh, this money could benefit the students of the school division. Yes, sir.
So?
We can't hear you, I mean?
Okay, I'm sorry, can you, is that better? How's that better? Okay, so, um, are you asking, so, since the town, uh, you returned three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the town at the end of last fiscal year, those unspent dollars for the school?
Yes, sir.
So in this fiscal year, are you asking for that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back plus for money, or you're just asking for that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back that we had given you?
So, um, at this point, I'm asking, well, let me, let me stop for one second. In speaking with several council members, I was told to paint a picture for the needs we would have to use all of the funds. The three fifty that we just, that was just returned, and then there was a school fund balance, if I'm not mistaken, of a little bit more than three hundred thousand dollars. And so I simply painted the picture to give you all the information on why the school division could use and could need, uh, those funds to address some of our concerns. So this is not, this has no connection with the, um, the budget process, uh, in, in any type way. So at that particular point, once the school board approves the budget for this upcoming school year and I present it to you, then we can talk about the, any increased need for the school division, but this was simply to, to address the needs I have outlined for you.
Okay, so, 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 I, this is the part I'm not familiar with, is the three hundred thousand dollar unused fund balance. I'm familiar with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you returned us, and I understand if you can appropriate that, we'd like to have that appropriate for the budget returned, and then?
Right.
Three hundred, maybe, the small things that are all particularly bad.
Yes, sir.
And three hundred, the state money that?
Right. From the budget year.
I didn't hear what she said, so I could.
Wasn't it Gladys who found the three hundred thousand in the fund balance when she was? No. The three hundred, there's.
It's two different parts.
I was trying to make errors in this, but, um, it's from years past that the three hundred thousand was in the fund balance, that the school had turned back and really didn't know to ask for those funds back, or they did. It's very common for school systems when they know, as Mr. Turner did, Mr. Turner was just coming in July one, um, it's very common for school systems to ask for their monies to be returned so they may use them in the next year. Um, I know one year, uh, Westmoreland County had one point two million that they hadn't spent, and they asked for it to be re-appropriated, and the board supervisors re-appropriated. So this is very common because you try to be extremely fiscally responsible, um, during the year, and ADM isn't calculated until March thirty-first, two-thirds of your year is over by that point. So that's where that must come from, to then appropriate.
Can y'all please use your microphone?
It's essentially what, what they're discussing, is six hundred, think of it as six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, they've had three hundred thousand revolving for years and years and years, and, and last year in their budget, they had three hundred and fifty thousand remaining on top of the three hundred thousand that they have loaned over. So they're discussing six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Does that kind of help?
Um, but I only remember in our, in the, the budget process was when, uh, they requested, I thought there was some kind of accounting rule that you put in all of?
No, in, in, we have that discussion to where it has to come back to the town. The school can request it and say, hey, we, we have a need for the upcoming year, that that's essentially what Mr. Turner is going through right now. Uh, it's typically done a little bit earlier, but they didn't have the year that they can come back and say, hey, you might need some, uh, and you started to have some unofficial classes coming to council.
But this other three hundred thousand, not the three fifty?
Yes, the other three hundred should have been back years ago.
So this, is that state money?
No, that's town money.
More town money?
That's town money, there's six hundred different kinds of.
That's not accurate.
I'm sorry, this is still confusing, because you're still confusing the numbers, three hundred thousand, and I would like the exact numbers for the work session with the date that it was returned, so that there's clarification on one versus the other. The three hundred was the cumulative overages over time that was returned, that was all talked about with the property and everything, we get back to here. The three fifty is something that was brought up in like October, November, later, that is because the state did not allocate enough time to give them to build in their fiscal budget. So I need them both numbers, exact numbers, not three hundred and fifty, three twenty-seven point one five, or whatever it is, and the three sixty-seven, or whatever it is, with the date. That way, there's no more, it's A and B and.
Hey, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Can I really respond to this so that you really know what the truth is about all this? Because I have stood at several meetings in public and talked about this three hundred thousand through the years.
Okay.
And I can't tell you the exact date, but if, if you recall back, uh, they were gonna build a middle school numerous years ago, in about two thousand eight, and the school hired an architect. And when they did that, they didn't pay the architect because the council, when Mr. Bone was the mayor, and other council members decided they were gonna withdraw their support for the school to build that building. So the school division got stuck with a three hundred some thousand dollar bill and didn't have the funds to pay it. And so Blue Justice, who was the architect, actually, uh, sued the town and sued the school. And there was a settlement made and the town paid the settlement. When I came on the board in two thousand ten, eight, whatever it was, uh, the first thing that I thought that we should do is that we had any leftover funds at the end of the year that they go back to the town to pay for that three hundred some thousand. So during multiple years, we returned money back to the town, we know we can ask for that money, and we didn't ask for it back, and we made that known to several councils, that's why we were doing that. But somehow, I know that this is all got convoluted, when, uh, Ms. Gomez came on the scene, she saw that fund setting there and saw it as, as, as money that had come back to the town all those multiple years that added up to whatever. I can only tell you that money was intended to be paid back to the town. That, and I can't stand here and listen to people say that it's, that was our intention. And, and so we're not asking you for that, I'm not asking you for that money, even though we can use it, but I believe that money was designated for a reason to give it back to the town. Like I said before, we cannot spend what we don't have. We could have spent that three hundred thousand and not even be here tonight, but the state was late in providing us back those funds, and because of that, we couldn't spend them on the things that we needed to spend it on. So it's a one-time thing, just this past year.
And it, so this doesn't have anything to do with the property transfer?
It doesn't, and, and you know, we talked at a meeting once before about the property, the, even the water tower field, where the council believed that they should pay us something for it because it was gonna be donated and used for something other, and we wasn't gonna get money for capital improvements that we thought we were gonna get out of it. Has nothing to do with the primary school building, any of that. It's state funds, there's no way that the, that anybody can say it's, it's town money. Um, it's, it's, it's money that's provided by the state at the end of the year, just like Mr. Turner said, based on ADM. And we get that at the end of the year, and that's why most school divisions, all school divisions, they conservatively pick what that number might be, because they know they can't go over that number without going back to the supervisors or the town and saying, we ran out of money because we miscalculated our ADM and we didn't bring in enough state funds. The state, the county, town funds we could hear, we use for salaries. That's what we use it for, because the town only allocates so many SOQ-funded positions, and we have to have support staff. So that's what we look at when we, we do that budget for, for using local designated funds for those types of things, and not for construction or, or anything else. You know, that supplements the state, and I know the argument's been made that you give us a couple hundred thousand every year above what actually the state says. There's, every school division. There's, every school division gets above what's, you couldn't operate if you didn't, if the town didn't give you more than what's actually allocated. And, and the state doesn't expect you to do that. And I, I, I was gonna ask you about responding to that six-page dissertation tonight. I don't know when is appropriate to respond to it, but I really want you to understand that's not factual at all. And that I would like to be able to respond to it whenever some of the, I mean, because it's, it's just not accurate. I hope you've had an opportunity to read it. Um, but I can state facts when it comes to that. And, and if you're gonna discuss this even in another venue, I'm not here to criticize anybody, the, the author of it or anything else, and don't want anybody to look bad, but... If I'm gonna tell you something that's gonna be honest, it's gonna be upfront and it's gonna be factual. Just like this three hundred thousand, I know where that came from, and I can't stand here and listen to people say they don't know, because I've been here for a long time and I know.
I think we're fortunate that we have a little bit of time on our side to, to prepare for this. And I think the vice manager has asked the town manager to give us some, some solid numbers. And, uh, I would imagine that the, the two entities can work through this and figure out if the numbers are correct across the board. So everybody will have a clear understanding, especially the public and the homeowners in town, that exactly what, what the money's being spent. So I think that's, that's true, you expect that, as, as we do too, so...
Well, we have no way, as you know, of getting funds, and the only way we can do capital improvements is through when we have money at the end of the year that may not have, we may not have needed. So we obviously don't want the council to say, oh, you had three hundred fifty thousand leftovers, so now we're only gonna give you one point three million and plus your three hundred fifty thousand, which will make up level funding from last year, whatever that number would be, so... Because then we, we've got a thirty-year-old building that's still going down.
I want to see that as, uh, as something that can be answered today. And it's something when you produce your, your budget and you come and you do a, a true budget presentation and say, look, after we had talks and solidify some numbers, and I think, at least for myself, I have a much better idea of, you know, how to go and what questions to ask.
And, and we would invite you, I, you know, there was a council member on the council last term that, you know, he was not a school advocate initially. He came and sat down with Dr. Newman and I for four hours, you and Mr. Rogers, and, and I mean, we went through line by line, and he shook my hand and walked away and came here and voted for what we asked for, because he understood then what our need was. Not just what he had heard in rumors and, you know, no facts to back it up. We actually showed him and went through there and answered every single question. And, you know, and we believe in that, we've always had open door policy, and, uh, and anybody on the councils, welcome to come and look at our, our budget and our items and, and why we do what we do.
I'm looking forward to getting a good, solid set of numbers, you know, to have an understanding that both sides have some understanding on that. So it's easier for, from a professional standpoint, to make an informed decision.
That's right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I have one last comment. Um, I was one of the couple town health members, I think, that requested that you give us this information, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, because I knew that there was going to be a request for funding and we needed to understand where, what your main priorities were. And, um, I would just also like to incorporate that the CIP was just passed by the Planning Commission, it will be forwarded to us. So, um, we will now have a chance to revise the CIP for this coming year. I know this is a town CIP, I think it would be good for the school to have, we talked about this, having their, your own capital improvement plan, especially for vehicles and arenas. Um, so that you have an idea of, you have done this before in other locality. So I know you already know where I'm going with it.
I do, I do know.
And you're on top of it, this is sometimes new for how, um, the town is operated. But I'd like to incorporate this request and this prioritization that you have in the CIP from the Planning Commission as well, so that you have multiple avenues to, um, possibly receive funding, if you're okay with that. And if you have any further, we can talk later after this, um, you know, about that. But there are several school items on the CIP right now, and maybe they're outdated, maybe they're not your priorities. And I don't wanna pass a CIP at the council level that doesn't really align with the way the school board thinks. So I just wanna make sure that this is, this is aligned.
Well, and Ms. Schick does like to ask about the hundred forty thousand dollars.
I know, they're very expensive.
And, you know, we can't use them on the field, and we can't use the ones we currently have, because the federal government come in and did an investigation because of Title IX and said, either get rid of those lights or get new lights. And we didn't have a hundred forty thousand dollars, so that's why we took the light bulbs out of the ones on the baseball field. So they haven't been used in about five years. But it's a big request, and, you know, it's almost half of what we're asking for now, that we could, you know, use these things, you know, move them up to this rather than those lights, cause we made out okay without them, even though it would be nice to have them, but...
Sure, that's okay. Like I said, you guys get to prioritize that, not me, I just know that it had been brought up in the past, and I wanted to just make sure I understood, um, where it was.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, I believe we're ready for Title IX, Department of Department of Reports.
Good evening, Council. Um, I was able to give you a read ahead last Friday, uh, so I'll go through the reports, uh, reports pretty quickly and brief by exception. Uh, the Boardwalk project, it's got a new project rate. We've been able to interact with, um, that individual, and we're under the understanding that the hundred percent completional growth has occurred. Torrey Smith project, uh, as everybody can see out there, ninety-five percent of the concrete has been poured, he only has a certain, um, shinnings, I believe, to the actual paths themselves. But the line share of the actual walk has been made. We're waiting for weather to wait, so even in parkland landscaping and all the other, um, portions of the park. Very survey initiatives with Jeff Howard, we have been working on, uh, multiple things to include the Santa Maria project issue that we previously discussed. As well as we have a new, uh, camera in the finance department that overlooks the calendar now, uh, just so everybody knows that, uh, we videotaped and recorded that opinion. One that I would like to bring up that might be worth spending some time on is, uh, we've ran out of areas on our vendor program. That's a good problem to have, uh, but I need to come to, I've got a lot of citizens coming, uh, wanting to do, uh, non-standard things at the town in the past, where, like you said, up in, uh, commercial areas that art ordinance really doesn't support. But it could be beneficial just for the citizens and the town council chooses for Allison and myself, probably with the help of, uh, Herr Turner, to look at what this ordinance is, to look on. Is that something the council would want us to, maybe as someone to get a cursory understanding?
I fully support, uh, excuse me, I fully support food trucks and things of that nature, especially for special events. And, uh, you know, I know there's been some issues setting up at Napa Park Lot, although they have permission from Napa to do that, it is at Beach Gate. The only request I would have is that they don't set up in front of a Miller restaurant, uh, to school customer base from those folks. It would be fair and a fair figure for the standalone businesses, uh, who pay the full, full year-round taxes. Uh, but, you know, I mean, everywhere you go, it pays well, there's food trucks and, you know, special food vending, things like that, it's just my feeling, so...
I have a question on this, this is also about, uh, vendor programs like the sports, water sports on the boardwalk?
Yes, that, that could be included, uh, specifically kind of, uh, because of, uh, situations in Napa and Beach Gates, where people were trying to, uh, set up and, and the argument was to say, it's profitably enough permission, it's commercially done, why can't I do this? And it's, it's really a gap in how our ordinance is written. Our vendor program is only located geographically on our boardwalk, and it's just how it was written and it moves together. So if we can modify that and understand what it looks like, uh, we can bring it to you and you guys approve it, so that those activities can be allowed.
On behalf of the businesses, um, that particular business that sets up at Napa is a tanker truck that also sets up on the boardwalk during the tourist season, which is spring, you know, April through October, November sometimes. And they moved, tried to move it to Napa because there's a lot more visibility there in the lesser season months, the winter months. So I don't see why we would not encourage no tax, no opportunities for people to have those people.
So if it pleases Council, I'll give it a Zenon and we'll, we'll look at it and of course get it along. I don't know, because I think you have enough guidance where I think Council's looking for, uh, commercially done, so not residential commercially done, we do our own property, uh, other than boardwalk. So I'm looking forward to that.
Not to belabor this, but, um, do we have something on hand, if somebody wants to have a party at their house, a cookout, that they want to invite a, a vendor company? Do we have something for the ice cream man that goes to residential neighborhoods, like the ice cream person, I should say, that goes through?
We, we have a cobbler's, um, that kind of supports the door-to-door kind, I guess, ice cream truck, the losing fall into that residential vendor. I don't think that we support them.
They could pull a special event for that in Napa.
Okay, so, I mean, because, you know, I hate to run ice cream person off, but, you know, okay.
I think what we need to do is look at the old ordinance and see where the gaps are and how to fill them in. Kind of hard to tell somebody who's having a kid birthday party, that they can't have a blue jar for the ludes and stuff like that. It just needs to be addressed, it's, it's fairly old, it's patched together and so...
Uh, special events we're currently approving, this document is, uh, last week, we have to submit it to the panel clerk, uh, so it's a little bit dated. Uh, but rest assured, we have much, uh, we have a lot from the Chamber Inn currently being processed. We do have the Osprey Festival approved, the Nola Night Grand Mom Festival, two five-year ones, and the Golden House tour, so that's moving on, explaining it. Pending your questions on this to, uh, finance. Uh, finance admin software integration is, is going along, but currently in the requisition, per chart orders, order, um, phase in, I guess you would say. Again, I say this a lot, but it's a six to ten month process, so this is a massive change, uh, in software and in internal to our staff, so they're learning, uh, a new way of doing things. Um, I was able to meet with Avenue Analytics, that's our company that we hired to go after unfound revenue. Uh, I was able to spend some time with them and, uh, Mr. Schaefer yesterday, and they feel confident they're good, that they're gonna start being able to deliver us, uh, Gotten's annual reporting probably next month. Uh, so it took a long time to go through the discovery phase. Uh, they also went through an acquisition of another company as well, which I think probably proved to be about a month, a six month, uh, six-week pickup, while they were kind of running behind. Uh, but after meeting with them yesterday, they feel pretty confident that come March, they should be able to start giving us ideas and, uh, reports on things that we have not solved in terms of evidence, and I look forward to pushing that to you. Uh, we're of course in budget season, I think, uh, as a, as a meeting here kind of shows us that it's that time of year that department heads, and also in one of, uh, your upcoming things, and, and, um, you're, you're gonna see the outline for it. Mrs. Gomez isn't here today, it looks pretty self-explanatory. Uh, we don't, we're seeing hiccups as of yet in terms of the timeline, uh, all department heads are aware, uh, they're getting their information together, and I'll keep you updated on that as well. And we were fortunate enough to have, uh, Mr. Cuomo's colleague, Phyllis Katz, last week here to discuss, um, our HR inner workings and our job descriptions, so we can get, uh, a formal evaluation process done inside the town. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Cuomo, because he's here, that I, I reached out to this Katz today and had a great conversation with her. It was fantastic training, uh, it's gonna be a great interactive relationship, and she's gonna be able to, uh, move us forward by leaps and bounds from an HR perspective, with both the evaluations and job descriptions. Any, any questions, I'll move along to police. Um, significant activity there was in, uh, the month of January, a drop-by shooting that was reported on Taggart Street, is continuing investigation. Uh, the numbers speak for themselves in terms of how many calls for service, uh, offenses reported, and subjects arrested. Police chief has informed me that he's spending a significant amount of time doing interviews and qualifying people for upcoming positions. As, as I've mentioned to a couple of council members, but I'll say this in public, uh, we had fifty percent turnover in our, in our beat cops last year, two thousand and eighteen. And, uh, that was, uh, very hot turnover, they didn't leave us because of, uh, their love for former leadership, it was a, it was a monetary issue. Uh, so we're working hard to be able to alleviate some of that. But the fifty percent turnover was caused leadership inside the police department to, um, proactively and aggressively pursue candidates. And not everybody who applies for, you know, an unfortunate position is so qualified. So it, it's a, it eats up a lot of time, and I just wanted to kind of say that. Pending any questions, oh, but we would like to, um, in January, we were able to bring in Officer Nick Alfresch, I hope I pronounced that correctly. I'm sure he has fun, uh, he will mispronounce it. Uh, we, he's in the training academy, but I look forward to bringing him on, uh, he's great to hire.
Bruce, will you introduce the, the leaders in the background?
Yes, that's, uh, to the left is Officer Travis Bowden, and to the right is Officer Thomas Gray.
Any of your questions, I'll move on to Zenon. Based off of Council's strategic intent for two thousand and nineteen, uh, Zenon has been proactively getting after code compliance measures affiliated with, uh, light removal. Uh, this is a fantastic activity, we, we love to support it. Uh, just expect that as we tackle the issues of light across town, that we're gonna have increased citizen complaints. Uh, that it just kind of goes along with the program. And, uh, just be ever mindful that, uh, we have whole people out there working and trying to get after division, uh, how it looks. We're doing a lot of background stuff for the property, uh, for the pier lease agreement stuff, and, and going through a lot of, um, different mechanics to make sure that we get that right via whether it's X I D extensions of law lines, et cetera. Uh, I think that, uh, the extension has been able to identify sixty or seventy piers thus far, and we're just, uh, it's, it's a huge project, and it's gonna take a lot of time. And, um, just know that that's being worked at feverishly behind the scenes, but it's meant to work with you.
I'd like to add that Leslie Lander has done extensive work on this project.
Leslie, we say thank you very much.
They were actively engaged with the reconstruction and the successful reopening of McDonald's. I was in there last night for the first time, it really looked fantastic. Um, I'll go to facelift and a record time, I mean, it was pretty impressive. Uh, our Zenon department had, uh, gives a lot of, uh, a lot of background noise to make sure that that was able to happen uninterrupted, once they started moving forward with that. Uh, and then as, um, Councilwoman Schick, uh, mentioned, the, the Planning Commission is having a public hearing on the recommendation of the nineteen twenty capital improvements plan, which I think has been touched on a few times in this meeting, so I'll elaborate. Pending any questions, we'll move to public works. Uh, Robin Road Water Facility upgrade is, is basically complete. Uh, we're coming up on, uh, finishing touches, any additional information about that, I have Mr. Murphy to my left, he's gonna answer any questions. And we were able to get the Clots, uh, RFP out for Denver, so I don't know if anybody responded to it yet, but, uh, just know that it's out there, we wanna be able to get that done, uh, before the summer season ends. Pedestrian Plaza, I mentioned before, the drawing's a hundred percent complete, there's a lot of corporate, um, parking. Oh, yes, um, we, Robin Murphy and I, we met with T Two Systems, this is a new parking, um, company. Bottom line, we, we think that we had two critical failures last year, a very peak weakness. We can only estimate that we lost probably four, five thousand dollars in each failure. Uh, it's unsatisfactory, and the level of service that we got, once we made that frantic phone call, left us wanting as well. Uh, so we believe that what we have is, is pretty out of date, uh, it needs to be revisited. And, uh, after reaching out to T Two Parking, uh, we believe that their solution set to our park, parking as we move into Phase Two, which is the painting of Washington Street and a portion of Flannel Avenue, that we might as well bring this company in, see if they make sense in terms of, uh, financial. And, but primarily customer support. Uh, last year, Thomas said very valuable lesson that while it might... a very valuable lesson that while it might be cheap, um, if you lose four or five thousand dollars every weekend and that happens twice in a year, um, how cheap is it? Very, um, and, um, so we actually have a p- uh, appointment next week, I believe it's Tuesday. Where they're literally coming, um, from out of state, they're bringing a box and they're going to give us a dinner for half the day. And, um, we'll keep you updated as that moves forward. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I, I believe they're going to take a holistic look at the, at the town's parking system and, and really to you also, we have, we're hoping that they're able to give us some guidance as far as in relation to how the system itself operates, um, whether it be paving display and the different options that are available out there these days that are more cost effective.
One thing I would ask if you would do, uh, that's kind of quite frequently, uh, I guess a little more urbanized areas, but that trick is down here eventually, and is if they can keep the user funds.
That's been discussed for a minute, will be discussed.
Uh, even though to the police department, they might be able to stand the license plates. So they're going to be able to come together and talk that whole piece. Uh, just, uh, I'm no parking near the connoisseur, but just looking at what they have online, uh, it looks very easy. It looks very virtual. It looks, it looks like it's up to date technology and ours looks just, just not, you know, similar to ours. Uh, the water meter system, um, uh, that's still ongoing. Um, if you do have any, uh, very specific questions, I'll defer to Mr. Murphy. And then paving, uh, we're getting to the point in the year to where once weather cooperates, we're going to have paving initiatives across the town and a couple of projects that we're looking on. And as this develops, uh, we'll share this with you. So pending any questions, uh, that concludes the department works.
One question, the poles that taken down, the Dominion poles that were in the middle of sidewalks, I thought some of them had, about all of them at this point?
No, the Dominion will not remove the pole until Horizon and Metrocast remove those. So, you know, if they're still, if they're still Horizon and Metrocast wires on, uh, they're not pulling it down until such time as those are gone.
So is there?
So, glad I can, I thought that's the scheduling between Dominion and Verizon and Metrocast.
Is there any way to get an update on that?
I'll try.
Okay.
Sometimes, you know, that's kind of bureaucratic and.
It looks like most everything in Washington Avenue here's been disconnected from the, the other called ZIL poles. Not all the communication lines, at least across here, outside of street and town. So they're just probably ready to go.
I can certainly check them off, especially on Washington, you're saying?
Yeah, and those are really not only the biggest eyesore, but the biggest, uh, people hazard as well. So, I'm kind of concerned about, uh, do you pull them out or they cut them off of the base? I, I mean, pulling them out would be the best thing than filling the concrete rather than trying to cut it off of the base. Is that something we do? Is that something Dominion does? Do Verizon or Metrocast or?
Dominion comes back to, to the post, but a lot of them, they have been cutting off the base, you know, if it's, if it's in concrete.
Yeah, maybe in the, uh.
And these on, Washington on.
Okay, well, there's something to be careful.
So, so then at that point, it either has to be very smooth and, and chances are it's going to rot or you have to go back and do something else. Uh, when I have the discussion and, uh, I'll, I'll speak specifically to the ones that are already, already stripped.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll mention that to you.
See if maybe they'll pull out.
And see if maybe they'll pull them out, even if we have to.
Any questions? New business, uh, resolution number twelve dash nineteen, this will be your twenty budget timeline. Is there a second? Are there any discussion? Mr. Allen, hi. Mr. Ryan, hi. Mr. Wayne, hi. Ms. Groveson?
Hi.
Ms. Jett?
Hi.
And the next one, resolution sixteen dash nineteen, authorizes and privileges to town manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Westmoreland County pertaining to the building interest. Is there a motion?
Okay.
Is there a second? Are there any discussion?
I, I may have misunderstood. All right, I'm sorry. Um, I may have misunderstood, but what did Larry say about that earlier? I thought that that's gone to Mr. Basabi and that Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Basabi were.
Yeah, I need council to approve this and we'll use it. We can take it to the county, then the county attorney and I can have a discussion concerning it. The county seems to be under the impression that they have to do it and I'm under the impression they don't.
Oh, I thought they were the ones that didn't think. I thought they didn't think you needed the MOU.
Right, that, that, they think that they have to do it without an MOU, um, but the statute doesn't say that. And that's a discussion with, uh, town council and with the county.
So this will improve?
Okay.
And, and the MOU addresses the issues, I think, that were important to town, which is making sure that there's a equality in applications so that town, you know, first in, first served type thing rather than any other thing. And making sure the county keeps the funds that are generated and, um, making sure that before they issue a building permit, that the African has its own permit or any other permit, town requires, put it in writing that everybody knows where it happens.
Real quick, um, Mr. Cornwell. Does this presume the town, Shakes, and I came and said, what, uh, I'm the CPO, CBO from Richmond, I've got every qualification I've ever been. I want to do this, uh, for thirty thousand dollars a year?
It's a ninety day op out.
Okay.
Whether, you know, uh, uh, you can make it less, you can make it more. I just thought you needed ninety days to make a change.
So it's up for a vote, Mr. Allen?
Hi.
Mr. Allen?
Hi.
Ms. Groveson?
Hi.
Ms. Schaefer?
Hi.
And Chair Rose, I think. All right, next on agenda is citizen input. Um, we got one, yeah.
At the last work session, the town had a discussion concerning pier permits. They also, the town needs to look at, they have two piers on Monroe Bay that you can't even walk on. One of them is on, now, he has been deceased for a number of years, but he had a residence in King George. How that pier got into his, under his control, I don't know. The other pier is right next door to the ice plant. You can't even walk on it. But yet I see some boats tied up right there and the town needs to do something on them. Now, the other thing, we all know we have a drainage problem. There are about a hundred streams that run parallel through the town and the most famous one runs down Taggart and over by the water tower. At one point, the town was maintaining the water part of that part and nothing has been done in years. And this is why the, the street down there by the water tower floods so easy because everything on the bayside is higher than what it should be. And, you know, I think the town needs to, you know, look at that part of things. And like I say, there are hundreds of streams that run parallel through Clonale Beach. They end up in Monroe Bay and are tight.
Hang on one second, Walter. Uh, real quick, so the, the, uh, Walter, one pier you're talking about is that the Solgrave and Monroe Bay?
Yes, yes, indeed.
We actually took ownership of that pier, so we're responsible for either repair or, or removal. Uh, I believe at some point in time it was, we were going to just take it out because it was unsafe. Uh, the other pier you're talking about was a small marina at one time, and I noticed yesterday that that person has started to remove some of the, the wood and, and actually an old sunk boat that was there is now sitting on land.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something to that? That is one of the several issues. It's, uh, there's a pending court case on one, um, and so we have had contact with him this week and I believe he is taking action now on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the public was aware that, that those two items are being addressed. Um, as far as Taggart Street, there's empty one that runs down the hill and ends up at the rescue squad.
That's part of it.
Part of it.
Well, Taggart is part of it.
I thought I saw.
But it runs through pipe. And, and when it gets down to the rescue squad, it runs through pipe out to the, uh, to the Monroe Bay.
I thought I saw us digging the, um, the trench back out over there. Is that right?
We've been doing some work back in there on the road.
Okay, I thought I saw something on that.
But across that hill, at, at the end, it's, it's in pipe.
Okay. It's, uh, so if you were walking across.
Taggart runs all the way down?
No, it's Taggart.
So you can go all the way down.
And yes, but, okay. Uh, first, I'm thirteen and Wayne is going to close me in a minute? And then you're going to close me in a minute? And then you're going to close me in a minute?
Yeah, I, I, you know, you know.
For me to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have to know where it's going. Yeah, that's changing.
Personnel.
Personnel, so we're personnel, we're so, before we come.
Yes.
Okay, the closed session of the, um, Town Consideration two point two, that's thirty-seven eleven A one, which is discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment or assignment of employment for motion, performance of motion salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointee or employees of the town. Thank you, Blackman.